James, you ready?
I can. I don't know if we want to give more time for more other to come back on.
All right, we're back in regular session, August 3rd at eight fourteen. Oak Ridge City Hall. And are there any motions resulting from the executive session that council would want to make?
I'd like to make a motion. I move to direct the C A to continue negotiations with the buyer on the offer to purchase O I P lot number twenty one.
Wait here a second.
A second.
Motion made by Council case seconded by Council Hallid. Any discussion or questions on this? Yeah, we better let her in before we go anywhere further. All right. Jackie, can you hear us?
Yes.
All right, there was a motion made by Council Kenyon and seconded by Council Hallid. That motion was that we are going to direct the city administrator to continue negotiations with the buyer for lot twenty one.
Okay.
And with that, if you could call for a vote.
Counselor Hallid.
Hi.
Counselor Coker.
Hi.
Counselor Tommen.
Hi.
Mayor Ketchum.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
Counselor Bjornson.
Hi.
Okay.
Motion carries item twelve, this is from the city administrator, twelve point one Junction City Dispatch update change.
Thanks. Right, so we had a meeting today in Junction City. Martin. Hallid, sorry, Madison. This is the county administrator of the city and for Waddell, we chief. Doctor Prejean, we identified September eleventh as. Our date. But that's where the month is, September eleven, eleven.
That's so appropriate.
Yeah, it's Monday. Like the Friday. In case there are technical difficulties. Techs available. So I made.
All right. Twelve point two WAC remodel and survey updates.
The survey has closed. I believe on Monday, but there's the end of the WAC subcommittee meeting will get results on that. At that time, the subcommittee will also be picking the sore feasibility study contractor.
Recommending. Right. We recommend to council and council chooses.
If you want counsel to choose every single little contractor, it's fine, but that'll.
Well, I don't think the WAC committee has the authority to choose. So like when we did, we gave a recommendation.
What is it we're talking about? Hiring a contractor?
Yeah.
Counselor gave approval to do it.
Is this something that requires an R F P?
R F Ps already been put out, council already approved, council approved putting in an R F P.
Yeah. I'm just saying that. I'm just saying the technicality is, is the committee recommends to council. We can't actually, we don't have any authority to choose.
I thought the R F P process was that multiple people apply. And then you narrow it down to what fits and you do a little subcommittee of people that this is the R F P process.
Yeah.
Yeah, using the WAC subcommittee as that.
As that process and then they make a recommendation to council to approve.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying.
That's what I thought the process is for R F Ps.
Right. Yeah, yes. Good job. That's what we do. Get it going.
Right, any other discussion on this? One point three Bedrock Fire Update change.
I included in council's. In the road so.
So on this, you know, hopefully everyone is dialed into where they can get information about the fire. I know Council Hallid is because she actually puts it on Facebook, but um it and I attend the morning meetings, that's James, the ten o'clock they have with the I M T. Right now, I feel pretty comfortable the way it is because it fired. While it's growing, it's growing to the northeast primarily, north and east. And there's a lot of burns occurring between there and here. So there's not a lot of fuel on the ground if it's part of itself. They've done a great job. They've got old containment lines from past fires. So it's looking pretty optimistic as with regards to Oak Ridge. Right now, I think Oak Ridge's biggest issue is the smoke issue that is, you know, much ways from moderate to spiking at a hazardous at times and it's no fun. But other than that, yeah, I encourage any council to dial in to the updates. They're good and the town hall they had, I thought was sad, was they did a great job. At town hall, community meeting, did a great job, brought the entire team here and did a great job explaining. There were some really good questions asked by the the audience with great interest and responses. So I thought it was a good thing. Any other questions on the fire at all?
No, I think it's a good segue to you to mention there's still air filters available. Right?
There are. So Oak Ridge Air over at the O I P office, if they, if there is people that need a replacement filter for the brown ones, I think you go.
Your. Go pure.
Go pure. Those are available and I think it's right now, it's still needs based because there is a limited amount supply of those. And I do believe if you're are also in need, there are additional air filters themselves. So pass that to anyone that does not have access to air filter. If you already have an air filter, you're probably not going to be authorized in a second.
I just forgot, I want to mention we are renting for O I P lots. Twenty one, there's twenty four. To fire for.
And Molly had mentioned that their firefighters are going to start camping out at the Bear Meadows.
Where? Hills Creek, so we're talking, they've been up there for a little bit.
Yeah, two days ago, I think they started moving in. So they'll be there camping. All right, item thirteen, which is items removed from the consent agenda. We have one set of minutes that we need to discuss, I guess.
Yeah, I actually had requested that. I asked for those minutes to be adjusted because that I found out after I read them and I admittedly did not read them before we voted on them. Due to just personal stuff going on, I actually got that meeting and I didn't read my whole entire packet. And I apologize for that, but when I did get the chance to read them, I found that not only was my motion on my original motion that I made was worded wrong, so I requested it be updated and it did get updated in this version. But also my second motion that I made that night that was not on our agenda, it was like a out of the blue motion that I made that got seconded and was voted unanimous was completely eliminated. So that got added to the minutes. And then the third topic of concern that I had with those minutes was that there was a section where we were discussing the budget. And the only comment that was mentioned in minutes was my comment that I said I was disappointed in the in the budget process this year. I mean, it was a little more, but that's roughly what I said. But there was also more discussion from other counselors and including the mayor that did not get mentioned in the minutes. And I requested that the general conversation be captured, more information, not just my one comment. The recorder decided not to edit that and left it out. So I would like to request that either the general conversation get added. If the council agrees or that mine, my one comment be removed from that section. I feel that this decision by our city recorder was biased against me in particular. And I would, in reading council rules, I feel like the context of the discussion should be included or not at all. That's my opposed to council.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I think that if one counselor's comment was recorded, that they equally should be recorded in there.
Well, what I don't want is our minutes to turn into a transcript, which is if you did it your way, it would be. And I think, you know, that minutes are not so much a math problem as they are in art in some cases because there is some subjectivity in the interpreting how much information to put in and how much is explaining. So there is some subjectivity, so. You know, I don't, I'm okay with, you know, excising your comment if you think that you were targeted, but I would tell you that the minutes were submitted by James, not the city recorder. He gave it to James and he put him on the agenda. So I don't think, you just heard, I said, James puts the minutes, puts up the agenda and approves the agenda with me. And included that is all the packet. And so if it's not the city recorder specifically that did this, it all goes through the city administrator.
No, my comment meant the city recorder wrote the minutes. And I asked for, I asked for those changes to be made and the city recorder opted not to make that change.
What I'm saying is ultimately James submits the minutes to the city council, not the recorder. So.
So in other words, James can say whether or not that change needs to be made or not?
He can, he can sit down with the city recorder if he does not agree with the way he's writing the minutes. He works for him.
Well, actually, isn't it in the charter that we choose who the city recorder is? And this would be part of the review process.
Are you going to supervise the city recorder? Is that you're asking to do?
I'm saying that the city charter actually says that we review the city recorder. That's a part of the judge and the city recorder. So I feel like this is a review of the city recorder's tasks that have been performed incorrectly.
A review of the city recorder should not be ad libbed at a city council meeting. It should be a structured annual review.
Fair enough.
What I'm saying is the city council, if you want to take over the day to day administration of the city recorder, do her payroll, do all of that, then yeah, you're right. You have direct supervision over the recorder. However, James is the city administrator. The entire staff works for him. He's the C E O.
Thank you.
I remember when it was right by started, she was appointed and they're in the motion. But the James oversaw all the functions.
Yeah.
Everything falls to the recorder. Because that way we weren't responsible because we're not. Yeah, exactly, but.
Yes, that's right.
That's what I, I'd have to go back and look, but that's what I remember.
I think right now that we're talking about what we want reflected in the minutes, so we're probably off a little. Mayor, can I say something?
Uh.
I just wanted, yeah.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Jack.
Final of council discussion.
And we have a counselor.
We wanted to add if we agree indoor and I'm trying with that, but I would like us, the council, to be able to finish this discussion before we add, such as we did earlier with that. I mean, can we?
Yes, Jackie, if you wait, please, we'll get you at the end. But I will say there's a difference here. That was a member of the public. This is your staff. You're entirely, you're interacting with your staff. Is there a problem? But anyway, but go ahead, Counselor Bjornson, please.
Yeah, in my opinion, this really has nothing to do with the city recorder themselves, but isn't it our responsibility to review the minutes and ask for changes to be made? And are you saying that objectively? Or I'm sorry, subjectively, whoever those changes should be made by can decide not to do something councils asked? Or does it have to always be reviewed by James first to make sure it's been done or to say it shouldn't be done?
What I'm saying is, is the city recorder is a recorder. City council is not a recorder. We are not and not been trained to be a city recorder. So yes, you may not agree with what's in the minutes and you, and that's why they came on the consent agenda, which James submits. And you had the opportunity to ask that changes be made to your satisfaction, for the council's satisfaction. All I'm saying.
And it sounds to me like Counselor Kenyon, that's all she's saying was asked and it wasn't done, so.
Well, she was specifically singling out her recorder and my point was, was that the packet is and agenda are submitted by the city administrator.
I just kind of recall that it didn't, wasn't it a you brought this up and then it was said like, well, they don't record it for data. And I don't know, I didn't have to go back and look at the video, but I kind of recall that being brought up and asked to change, but it's been said that it's not always reported for data.
That's not the point.
Counselor Kenyon is talking about a motion that was made, seconded and voted on that wasn't included. That should be included. That's not subjective.
She's actually talking about about a comment made about the budget. She made a comment about the budget with a slightly negative connotation, but Mayor Ketchum also made a very similar comment that was not recorded. So hers was recorded, his was not. So she's saying, record them both or don't record them both. It's simple, just be equal.
It wasn't a negative connotation. It was just a comment made that we both agreed with.
It is, but I guess ultimately my point is I brought this up multiple times, James has throughout this year and in prior years. But specifically, I think the minute should be consistent. I realize that legally, we only have to have the motion and the vote and how each person voted legally. So in my opinion, throughout this year specifically, it's been all over the board as to whether or not discussion is included. Some motions get no discussion, some motions get little discussion, some motions get a lot of discussion. The point is, it's all over the board and I feel like it's re-presented bias. In this particular case against me, it's been biased against other counselors in the past. I would like consistently consistency, I would like to see the council make the decision to either include none, include some, meaning more than one, or all, which I know you're against, which is fine. It's minutes used to be fourteen pages long. Now they're two or three.
All right, well, I'll make a motion that we direct the city administrator to and the recorder to strip all comments out from the minutes and only have motions, votes, and that's it. Wait here a second.
Second.
All right, motion made by me, seconded by Counselor Tommen. Any question, any discussion on that motion?
I would support that.
I think that's. It's got to be in compliance with the.
Yes, of course, but I think it's easier to go minimalist than it is because if we pick some, then it's always going to be subjective.
That's what my motion was.
Exactly, yeah, just let's go to minimum people. If, you know, let's, council's discuss the issue, motion made by seconded, vote. They can go watch the video if they want because otherwise it's always going to be.
I agree. Any other discussion on that? Jackie, is that okay with you? A stripped down version of the minutes?
Sounds perfect.
Okay. All right. No more discussion. The motion is to direct the city administrator that all minutes henceforth will be votes, outcomes of votes only.
And each counselor's vote by name.
Yes, yeah, it's by the regulation. All right, Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Yes, Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
Counselor Tommen.
Hi.
Mayor Ketchum.
Hi.
Counselor Hallid.
Hi.
Counselor Coker.
Hi.
Counselor Bjornson.
Hi.
All right, motion passes. And with that motion, James, I guess you'll take those minutes back and strip them down and bring them back? Yes, okay, great. All right, on to item, see, not fifteen, on to item sixteen, which is staff and board committee commission reports. Sixteen point one Parks and Community Services Committee, either Rick Zilstra or you're going to do it, okay, Counselor Tommen.
We met July tenth, so we, so very good public comment, just so everybody knows, there was discussion of Benji Bees and Community Garden. Not sure who's doing it, as far as I know at this point. The, we also talked about the R H R P in Lening County, which is the Saint Anthony's grant and loan program for rehabilitating housing here in Oak Ridge and Westford. This is, we discussed the pump track and how to move forward. Discuss for park. And why is the WAC not part of the parks since it's listed as a park? New business, Bill Ford opened this fall tournament in July, which happened already. The banner, our kiosk, your T request, which last session, and then clearing the trails around, like he calls how to.
Any questions on that? Tell the committee that if they want to get a game camera, we'd be happy to post on one of the trees overlooking the community garden. That's the fee. All right, Public Safety Committee, Counselor Coker.
I promised Counselor for bragging, I think, okay, votes are not with her. We discussed animal service issues, community service program. Mission committee and had a lengthy discussion about Westford issues. Actually, very good discussion with western citizens. Understanding what our police department can and cannot do.
Great. Questions, James? All right, sixteen point three Audit Committee, Counselor Kenyon.
As James and our auditor mentioned in earlier in this meeting, we met and reviewed our final audit and had a discussion of the audits about it. We talked about not needing to meet again until we this new audit will get started, I think at the end of August or maybe that it has, I heard some. Okay, so at the end of August and then maybe the audit committee would review or meet in, I think it was October to check in with them. That'll be, that'll be all.
Thank you.
And the next one's going to the charter subcommittee again. We met and continued reviewing the charter. We're kind of stuck on one section for a while at this meeting, so it was very good discussion.
All right, sixteen point five is Budget Committee has not met. Sixteen point six Library Board, did you go to that, James, by chance?
I actually did and I didn't bring notes with me as what was discussed from memory. There was some discussion about wanting to do enclosing the back patio.
Yeah.
And that the contract or, yeah, our city engineers bid was out the roofs. So there, the committee actually had a pretty good discussion about maybe other alternatives to accomplish the goal. Like using, they have a room that has just a lot of storage that maybe they can clean up and use that as a like a community meeting room. Oh, and they discussed a lot about any bid that's going to be coming up in it must be, maybe in September, it must be in October. Because they're going to finalize the event, but what they've got, they've got donations from artists and different, different people. Bit like business, like a business might put together a basket of goodies. Anyway, they want to do a silent auction to raise money for the library. And it might include, if they can coordinate everything, right? Some live music and maybe some wine tasting. So be looking for that announcement coming up in around the city.
Right, and on to R T M P.
Oh, it's me again. Oh, the R T M P committee did not meet because of lack of forums, so we'll be meeting again in August, is that right, James?
No, that.
Oh, am I talking out of? No, we didn't meet in July, but but that was already reported on in July.
Yeah.
Because that involved approving payment tax or something like that. So what we're free to do is skip our August meeting because some of our committees is going to be out of town. We won't be resuming again until September.
All right, sixteen point eight Planning Commission, Rick, you have anything?
I do not have anything.
Okay. Thank you. All right, James, sixteen point nine O D E C.
Going unanimously on a new resolution, resolution for the committee. Me. Discuss. How we implemented, so. Presentation for business board.
Great, thank you. Sixteen point ten Special Fire District Subcommittee, Counselor Hallid, you have anything?
We got an almost final report from our feasibility consultant, Steve Abel, and really it is almost complete. There was just some, you want to add a little compass in there on some of the mapping, but after that, we plan to do a meeting with some fire chiefs in the county, possibly one in the state, just to come and talk about the options that we have on the table. And yeah. Things are wrapping up.
Thank you. Sixteen point one one Admin Committee.
Admin Committee is also me. I apologize, but my note right here says, find your notes. From that meeting.
Okay.
I didn't.
Next time.
Advise the parade ordinances, which would be.
Oh, that's right, we worked diligently, that whole meeting on that and.
What ordinance?
The parade's ordinance. Yeah, it'll come to council, the recommendation.
Great.
Thank you, James.
Sixteen point one two WAC
As Jamie already, James already mentioned, the survey ended on the thirty first, our whole committee has been working on the blue box, going, attending events and capturing it on social media. So I think at our, this next meeting last next month, we'll have results from the survey and then also maybe be comparing it to what the committee have identified as tenants for the building.
Please.
And do you have any idea how that blue box survey they was going, like are people dropping out?
Yeah, the actual physical blue box itself, I wouldn't say was utilized as much as the online, but the online, it's really where most of the things that were captured.
Most of it, yeah. I wondered about that because I, there's been times when I think the community needs a survey. It isn't necessarily. You know, like you won't capture every. You know, like, you won't capture everyone, you only do that line, so the blue box.
Yeah, I mean, it was utilized, it was, we took it to multiple events and it's been at stationary places all over, so it was, it just, very minimal.
Okay.
All right, sixteen point one three is the WAC Funding Committee, so we met and, uh. Primarily, uh, well, in general, we've got about three grants that we're waiting on answers from. Uh, we've been awarded the, the one grant and. Um, but the primary discussion was around a, a grant strategy that we're, we're talking about, and I think your committee will take it up, uh, as well. Um, but we may, we've, we're still, uh. Looking at it, and by the time of the next city council meeting, we'll have a recommendation from that, that committee. On what our recommendation is for. What order and how we, how we manage these grants, because there's competing grants and. One of them's kind of holding everyone thing else hostage, so we're trying to find out a way to get around that, which it'll all become clear next committee meeting when. It's on the agenda. Any questions on that? All right, uh, no other business? Please.
Um, it did come up in a, in a discussion earlier, so I'd like to, at a future meeting. Add an agenda topic to discuss. How to do evaluations of all appointed officers. Since we have a C A. Uh. Review coming back. Valuation. Because I think we agreed to do them in the fall. So it'd be a good time to do everyone together, I think, and we should discuss how we're going to do that.
Who does the judge?
That's what I mean, the judge and the reporter.
That's just gonna be a tough one, I'm not sure any of us really have close observation on the person, but.
We've done it once before, but it is.
Yeah, no, we discussed doing it and then COVID hit, and we even on a sabbatical, which was in the. Though, I don't know, it is in our charter.
So James, if maybe we can slice off some time to do a work session during a regular session that would. Probably use yours as a template and then see if we want to just adopt that for. The whole plan.
Yeah, we do that, um, some months, or at five o'clock.
Well, I don't think next, let's, let's push it out a little bit further, um. September, sometimes September.
We're already starting earlier, first meeting, September, second meeting.
Yeah.
Either that, yeah, if we need the extra time, unless you think, get it done in two hours, with everything else you have to do. Yeah, we're gonna have the logistics. Okay.
Trevor.
Say it in, say it in. It's not.
It happens.
All right, um, with any other business, council. Yep. Uh, now we're down to public comment on the Zoom platform. Uh, Mr. Barclay, please.
Dan Barclay, four seven five oh one, highway fifty eight, um, just a, a quick aside, if you look at Charter. All the discussion about city recorder, um. Is appointed by the council and serves as a non-voting ex-official member of council. And in the absence of the city recorder, the city administrator. Uh, appoint somebody else to, to, to do that, um, so I mean, it might be splitting hairs, but in that capacity. To me, that person works for the city council, uh, and I think councillor Tomlin said something about verbatim minutes. Two and a half hours into this meeting, or better. Four citizens have attended. It, it's said here. To get the actual verbatim live version of the council meetings. Or, and James does a good job getting them posted in time and matter, you can get a less verbatim, because they are sometimes edited version in, in a few days when it's posted to YouTube. Or you can wait till it's posted to the city website, if you don't want to go through three, four hundred pages of, uh. Packet. Because the last minutes that were posted to the city website was the second meeting in May. But the main part, or the main reason I wanted to speak. Was about the audit. As far as the audit, there's good news, better news, and not so good news. The good news is we've got a clean audit. The better news is that if I go to the hospital needing surgery. Or check somebody into one of my motel rooms, we have a different idea of clean than, uh. Government has. Um. Any, any rule, regardless of what you want to call it, be it the. In command, it's laws, rules, policies, codes, ordinance. Even the charter. They are written, when you think about it, they're written for people that need them. People that do the right thing and, you know, stand up so on, so they don't need laws, because they're going to do the right thing with or without them, if everybody. Did the right thing, we wouldn't need any laws whatsoever. And this council at the last meeting knowingly. Approved two and a half times the amount authorized. Uh, to subsidize or help fund a, an event in their, in their fifteenth year, knowingly. Set aside their rules and. Take the can down the road for another year, and maybe we'll play by the rules then, maybe we won't, but if you look at the, uh, the audit. Two things come up in this quote unquote clean audit. And basically, it's internal controls. And it talks about reestablishing internal controls, not establishing internal controls, that was done in September two thousand and eleven. It was about reestablishing or play, you know, abiding by the rules that requires. A monthly reconciliation that wasn't done at all for twelve months by the former finance director or. No. He insured, like his boss or his boss's boss, that it was being done, so we didn't have a reconciliation for twelve months. We did use a auditor CPA for, as a second person. Uh, for the, uh, to address. Issues that were brought up in the audits from two thousand and nine to two thousand and twelve, and here we are, twenty twenty-three. With the same clean audit and the same problem with internal controls. Uh, monthly reconciliations not being done or not having a second person. To participate in that, as was the case for several years until the former city minister. Decided, well, we don't need an auditor for that anymore, so we're not going to spend twelve, fourteen thousand dollars, that they didn't need to, because it doesn't require CPA, requires a person. The point is. You know, the rules are in place, and it also reads that. As far as I could tell, the auditors did the, the reconciliations for the entire FY twenty-one, twenty-two audit period. But it says we're currently up to February twenty twenty-three with the mon- monthly reconciliations. Six months ago. Is the last. Well, we're six months out of date with monthly reconciliations now. That have nothing to do with the audit, the policy's in place, read them, ensure that it's happening. Because when it's not, obviously, it creates problems and, you know, problems for everybody, but. Making these meetings less transparent, I, you know, that, that's just, to me, that's just wrong, because not everybody's going to sit for two and a half, three hours, whatever. On meeting night or even off time, they, they don't attend these meetings. For a reason. And, and it, it makes the information less available, not more available. And I'm sorry to go a little bit long, but, uh. That's, that's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Barclay. Mr. McGath, you still coming?
Uh, sure, uh, I think, sure. The. The first is that the, the packet with the proposed changes for council, uh, rules. And that's, that was not part of the online available, uh, packet. So I, I assume, and that's what I was going to mention earlier, is that was not publicly available. Uh, needs to be twenty-four hours ahead of meeting, in order, for me, for instance, for you to be able to make a comment. So I, I thought, oh, okay, the error is mine, because they can access it on, on the July work session. Uh, so I said, okay. And it wasn't clear to me until you made the, the, uh, addendum proposal, that, oh. That's apparent, that apparently didn't pass in, in the, uh, in this work session. So I'm, I'm looking at something that is a different something than what you all look. The public that didn't have access to that, so I don't know how actually passing that would be, uh, in accordance with, with public, well. So that's, that's one little piece, and the second piece related to that. Is that the, uh. The very rules that you all voted to approve tonight. Says in chapter, chapter six, section one, eighty-five, that the, uh. Recorder is supposed to be recording it in minutes, but the substance of any discussion, what do you have? Okay, so. I, I understand your proposal, uh, to strike that, and I don't know if that was. Uh, clear to the rest of the council that you were. You're voting, you were voting to undo what you had just voted to approve, uh. But there's, that's, that's sort of procedural change that I. As a member of the public, I would appreciate it, having the opportunity to speak on prior to the, uh. It's a group on the, uh, prior to read, uh, therefore be able to speak on prior to this.
James, any?
No, I, I agree with it, and I'm gonna bring, I'm gonna bring the edited version back to council. Approved up the council rules, see, in two thousand and twenty-three. After they are edited, but I assume the council would want to look at it, maybe. Put in the. Congratulations from the city attorney. Up there. Uh. As long as they challenge the charter, so I assume the council would want to look at it, so. That's what we think. And the draft would be very probable, uh. The weekend, then.
So, so there's a, is there, therefore a lot of nation of, uh. Of what happens tonight in terms of passage of those rules?
So what I will do is in the agenda, though, I will recommend the council that a motion is made to reiterate a previous motion and make a new motion. To approve the new edited. Version. That has been posted.
Councillor Kenyon.
So I got a copy in my packet. Is that not what that posted online for the cover?
No, no.
Um, I think it was posted, I, I'm on for the public until much later.
Um.
He got it early, and, but I even went on the webpage and saw that it was not there. So it just had the agenda.
I, I asked Jack to do that. Today's, but it's not happened during Monday.
Because Monday is when we got it, I did want to. I did want to point out to you, um. Matt, thank you for all of your, um, instructive advice. Um. Part of what we discussed tonight in, that was the attorney. Uh, recommendation, and that is privileged, so that wouldn't be in the packet, and I. My part of my question was, did we just? Was that the only part you didn't get, or did we not give it at all post?
I can literally go to the website, click on it, and not get the back.
I'm.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm on right now, using, going through the, I opened up the meeting. Calendar me, of it. And there's a link down there. But.
He might be, are you using the government tab and then minutes and then?
City council meeting over. In the package in there now, there's a packet, like the packet, and. Takes me to OneDrive. And there is a one-page file.
Oh.
No, it's more, there's more than that.
I'm getting a hundred and ninety-three page file.
Uh, that's my dad.
Okay.
So there you go, uh, just not, not familiar with this, OneDrive, that, uh, with my head.
Yeah, but I do think that it is appropriate to have. The new version posted to the public ahead of time, because. That memo from our city attorney is perfect.
Yeah.
So that change. People aren't going to know what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, let's, let's add this, that is. That part hasn't been posted to the public, so that's why I'm, I'm still bringing it back.
But there has been times that we have allowed city attorney information open to the public, and something like that seems that. Like, it should be a no-brainer that we allow that, you know?
Right, however, also. The fact that we're discussing it in public makes it public, so.
Yeah, but not when they can see it, it's not public, because they don't get to see what we're reading. They have to be able to acknowledge that. Because we were looking at it, but they can't work at it, so then it's not necessarily public.
So I mean, that the version of the, um, document that we were changing. Did not include the.
Correct.
Language from the attorney's memo, so they wouldn't be able to see that, and we did discuss it here. Would be added later, so it would be included.
In the next one, yeah, in the next one, though, but I think his point was that the public is left out of our discussion, because. They're not able to view, like, all the stuff you were reading.
That's true.
I do want to, are you done?
Um, well, I just wanted to point out one thing really quick, there's another way to view minutes through the, um. Through the government tab. And then the first item down is agendas and minutes, and then it opens up just literally, um. Dates. And then over on the side, there's a tab called view, and that's where you can view packet. And, uh, I find that downloading it from there is. It, it doesn't come up with any words about OneDrive, it's just a document. So that helps you. It's like a PDF.
Yeah, that, it's a procedural thing that's, I'll have to work with James on, because I've been assembling those single. File packets on my own and sending him a link, because I get so huge. And in this case, that, it just pasted the link, so you, which are, when you hit that packet, it's actually going to my personal OneDrive.
Yeah, I just noticed that, too.
With all my, all my markups on it, so.
Oh.
So, it needs to be downloaded, city servers, and then a link made to the. City website. In future. Anyways.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
I didn't have, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead, finish.
I had one other comment I wanted to make regarding Dan Barclay's comments. Um, the, the terminology clean audit, I appreciate that it gets used a lot, but I looked at that, and what it actually means is. That the city fully cooperated with auditors during the audit process. This is meaning that it's like a good audit or a great audit or a bad audit, it just means we cooperated. So, uh.
A little bit to have to that, it means there's no misstatements, like if on an S R E form, where they have their blank or, um. Untruths, basically, which would be not cooperating.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Right. So we did have material, um. Material weaknesses and significant deficiencies, which is, is, um. I prefer that we didn't have any of those at all, on any of it, unfortunately, we have had audits in the past, quite a few of them that have those.
There's more to be discussed, I'll have to ask the council if they want to extend another thirty minutes.
Oh. Anyway, thank you, Dan, for your comments, thank you, Matt, for your comments, um, I'm done.
Yeah.
I just wanted to reply to both Mr. Barclay and Matt, that. I actually think this council, we need to reconsider and think a little bit harder on our motion that we all unanimously approved, which was. Not allow any discussion in, um, the minutes and summarization, because, um, one. As he pointed out, it contradicts our own council rules, and two, there are people that are very hard of hearing, in fact, there is one in the community that talks to me frequently. And he cannot hear the videos. Even online, it's really difficult for him, so a written version is really helpful to some people to have that. So I know, I'm not making a motion, no, 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 I'm not reconsidering, I'm thinking that we just need to dig deeper and give it a little bit more thought in the future, I'm okay with the way it stands right now. But I, we should not be violating or contradicting our own council rules, as Matt pointed out, so it needs more thought, also, um. There are other cities that use Dragon software and provide a full written dissertation of the meeting, and that is something that would be a lot easier, it's literally. When you've used it, use it, and you just capture it, and it doesn't mean that Jackie needs to, or whoever is doing it, needs to go through and summarize it, it could just be, that could be a separate thing available. That's all I have.
Anything else?
Yes. I actually.
An extension?
Yes.
Thirty minutes?
Yes.
Anyone else want thirty minutes, Nigel?
I'm trying to. I just would like to hear what she has to say.
Please, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to reconsider that, because you can. So anyway, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider our earlier motion.
I would second that, thank you, Don, about it needs to be done in the same.
It has to be done in the same, by rule of procedure, and so if we want.
Yes, thank you.
Go on this further and have more discussion, we need to reconsider this motion.
All right, this is made by councillor Kenyon, seconded by councillor Holliday. Any discussion on this? Uh, Zoom or in the room? Jack, would you call for a vote, please?
Councillor Hollitt. Hi.
Hi.
Councilor Coker?
Hi.
Councilor Tarnam?
Hi.
Mayor Ketchum?
No.
Councilor Kenyon?
I.
Councilor Bjornson?
I.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it everybody? We get six seconds, is it six?
Yeah, that was everyone.
Okay, thank you, motion passes.
I saw them.
Meeting adjourned at nine oh four.